...home page for City Ethics. So that's, this is what ends up happening. We're still in the issue of if the owner comes forward and handles their use of eyes. Go Paws has been taking the lion's share of the animals to animal control. Can you continue on with the process of finding the homes? However, this is a simple point of failure in the system. When Go Paws is entertaining, it's very sensitive to their own resource limitations. They're no fault of their own. Other rescues are asked to step up to assist. However, as you may not be aware of this, this year has been one of the most horrific on record in terms of almost all the consent adoptions and sky kind of race of people dumping and surrendering their own animals shelters. This binds the hands of, binds the hands of many that may know come to vote, Go Paws and the extension areas assistance. With the changes that we've seen in the rest of the community this year, the issue that I found is that animal control is not allowed to perform adoptions directly to the public. Now, I know there were concerns that doing public adoption opens the potential floodgates of the very same owner surrenders getting to animal control. However, the other animal control facility in this county, one around animal control, has not accepted owner surrenders since at least during 2008. That's gotten along quite well. For dealing with control is another example of local animal control that opens and closes their acceptance of owner surrenders as needed based on demand. In fact, three weeks ago, they did close their acceptance of any owner surrenders and are only taking tracks picked up on them as needed places. Hawkins will animal controls, another crack example of this practice. Money and manpower is always an issue with changing systems, as I am well aware. However, public adoptions are open to their simple, easy, implement and free and very low cost actions that can be taken to improve the proposed system. For instance, I have a volunteer social media manager who lost a foundation in the county. It reaches just over 10,000 people and has been responsible for on the Green United Pets and our other across the county many times over. A recent survey by the Pew Research Center indicated that 69% of 1,500 cold cold adults started to use Facebook as a social media platform, with 45% checking it multiple times throughout the day. Between my own anecdotal evidence using it as a tool for good in the community and the fact that Facebook is prevalent as an information gathering tool on our neighbors, whether your career in social media being good or bad, it is irrelevant. The point is, it's a free platform to use, take its information into the hands of people who can do it pets and who can do it out. I work a full time job and I've been able to reunite pets with their owners, direct people low cost baby options, rescue options, and wildlife rehab locations. Along with other information related to imperative and animal related tasks throughout the county. And second, sometimes snatch and clean work when lunch breaks. It takes approximately five seconds to double post the micro results and animal fighting forever family. Or maybe playing bad runner. And the best part, opening animal control officers that's already hired and on staff here at Marston is already proficient with the platform and are asking us to provide animal sustainings. So clearly the resources that is already available. How like to help the animal, whether and then for the public or our rescue, if they don't have the animal that's available, that's basically our knowledge. Because members of the council realize that animals are posted as sound either very pleased part of Facebook's page or by, I can say, as a volunteer effort on the part of Go Paws and irregular animals. There's no reason why area animal control should not have their own social media presence similar to that of one around animal control. Another issue that I see very clearly interacting with my age is a keen imperious, imperious public perception. We have taxpayers from City of Perry, who are afraid of falling out of control to help them when they find a pet. Do you realize how sad that is? They already ensure they're doing the right thing by asking for assistance from the government services that they themselves help fund with their tax dollars, just because they don't want to be the cause of animal stuff, should know at their time of rescue the animal. Another feasible solution to this, to this problem is to help monetize the process of adoption, to help area animal control's costs. If the entity of animal control was placed under the police department, for instance, if I understand it correctly, police officers would be able to write tickets or repeat events and enforce codes, and other animal cruelty related tickets, and define the cost and count of order losses. Revenue could be why the care for the animals and provide a reduced maximum, which is required by state law, to adopt to the public. Now, I'm not suggesting that animals be held indefinitely in hopes of adoption. We're not suggesting that opening adoption programs will solve all the problems to the day rates. What I am suggesting is through plain, simple, easy and implement solutions, that these animals be given a chance at an ethical way, using the resources that the city already has at hand. Maybe open up animal control during hours for the officers to argue that it provides a possibility of adoption. Once a price going a few hours each time. There are two officers working in Perry Animal Control, alone over angels, because they chose to name perform at local veterinary hospitals regularly. A division of duties should open the way for a little more money to just provide a chance of revenue for the city. It seems to me that it would make more sense to try to get these animals out to the public and make maximum adoption to something great rather than simply and literally bury the problem. We can achieve these goals by opening transparency, transparency to a dedicated social media page. And the City of Perry's own website, which already exists and was running fine. We can use that back end endorsement in the form of viable tickets that violate municipal city. We can also have adoptions on animals' health anywhere from little to two to three days from a straight hold. I know this community, I grew up here and I stayed in it for years. Once people know the issues at hand, they want to help. Because that's the kind of aggressive state that we live in. But if people don't know the issues at hand, how can they help? And I know that was a lot to throw at you all at once, and so I made some points, something I can make up to the city council members, or something you'd like to.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the mayor and council at this time? Yes, if you would come forward and give us your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Dee Ellison, the 231th Servant in Perry, Georgia. I'm the director of the Humane Society in Houston County. We give information about things that are going down that are not in a progressive situation. We would like to give you some ideas such as that, just maybe of being able to make your animal shelter an animal shelter. There's a lot of things that can be done. I spoke with today one of the girls that called from the county. They actually got born in 2020 for being so progressive and also they go with Lifeline and they turned their situation around. And when I spoke with her, she said she could be clapped to talk with anybody, their city manager, on how that they've gotten things done. They actually have one paid position within their department, which is her, and she's able to do adoptions if she handles that situation. So I think there's a lot of things that can be done instead of, you know, like I said, your period's growing and leaves and bounds. Let's make it a progressive situation that's going to help the people with their animals. You know? And that's basically all I have to say.
Thank you. I appreciate your sharing.
Good afternoon. My name is Megan Coughlin. I reside at 110 Kingston Village Drive. And I do need to go on record initially as saying that I'm a private citizen and not as any organization I may represent as a red employee or a volunteer. However, I do freelance journalism and I have been published in multiple national media outlets and do retain those contacts. So I also can't disclaim that any events proceeding here with may not appear in future story. That said, you have, I've probably been in Perry for about 22 years. And I have two perspectives that I really want to offer you this evening. The first one is, as many other people who are here at Animal Shelter, I survived extremely brutal rape and near murder at 18, and big dogs are now having to save their lives. So I will always be there to defend these guys. That's my personal perspective. My professional perspective, my professional perspective is specifically in the area of communications and marketing. I spent about 20 years before I became a college professor, working in communications and marketing and consulting with organizations everywhere from small businesses to Fortune 100s across the country. My specialties were crisis control, crisis communication, and operational strategy. So you have subject matter experts, global, clearly. All of these people here, I suspect, know far more about how to run an animal shelter, how to work adoptions, how to manage the transition into a supportable adoption centric, animal centric, community centric facility. What I want to just make sure is that, having also consulted with many, many municipalities, the wheels of government can sometimes grind exceedingly slowly. And in this particular case, every time the wheel grinds slowly, animals die. That's a problem. That means that this is an issue that's wouldn't need to be treated with due urgency. Right? I understand that there has been one article so far published about this particular situation. And I love local media. I've worked for years for local media outlets, freelance for local media outlets. But I think everyone who has a PR background knows that that was kind of a mob. It was a very soft headline, it was a very soft article. It really is an opportunity by a local media outlet to offer a local government an opportunity to kind of do the right thing now. It's not going to stay local if nothing gets done. This is the kind of issue, and again, this is just purely, I've been doing this a very long time. This is the kind of issue that will look viral very fast and it will get very nasty very quickly. What City of Perry does not want is regional headlines and viral social media that say things like, "Local progressive city slammed for slaughter and shelter pets." Right? Those are the headlines we don't want. Nobody here wants. But they are the headlines that will end up happening over this issue. You do not mess with the animal people. You just don't. Sure, I'm sure some of you know the statistics. Animal people spend roughly five times more on their animals handling than their kids. Okay? So this is one of the most passionate groups of people out there. And this is the kind of thing that could blow up very fast and very big. So what I would simply urge as someone who lives here and kind of likes it and would like for people to continue to have a positive perception of the city, I would really like to urge the council to make sure that you understand the import of this issue and think seriously about getting ahead of it as quickly as you possibly can and making decisions as quickly as you possibly can. Because once it goes south, there is no spin that can be put on this that cannot be unspun, weaponized, and spun right back tenfold. But if the city acts decisively and with urgency to rectify the problem, this could be a beautiful opportunity for PR outreach, for the kind of media and social media, traditional and social media that I think everybody here wants to see the city have. That's all.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Yes?
Hi, I'm Barbara Wolf. I have a business in Houston County.
Can we get your address, please?
Yeah, I actually live at, well, I actually live in Peach County, but I have a business in Houston County. I have a 501(c)(3) called Animal Resources. I work with several rescues, I need data, so I work with data on several occasions before it to legislation in Georgia. We, we've traveled around the state of Georgia for the last three years and looked at processes and procedures that are in different shelters, on top of different shelter directors. It's a touchy subject. It's emotional. It's, I get it. But you got to be logical too, and you got to see the city side as well. And we know that we have to look at funds available, budgets, things like that. So what I do is, is I go into the city and I ask for their, their budget. And I'll look at their budget, I see how the money is spent, and I try to help them to better their processes and their procedures on implementing the best thing that's available for that particular area. Because everybody's hemorrhage, you can't just, once you decide, it's busy. So I did want you guys to know that we are available to help if you guys would like to contact us, to see if there's any way that we can help implement some of these processes and procedures to help things run more smoothly for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the mayor and council at this time? Thank you. Item four is a public hearing. Item four, the purpose of this public hearing is to provide any interested parties with an opportunity to express their views and concerns in accordance with OCPA Section 48, x5, x32. This public hearing is now open. Item four A is a public hearing for establishing a million for it. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council citizens, this is the first of three required public hearings to allow the public to express any comments they may have relative to the city's public hearing.
Council members, do you have any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the proposed million break? Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of the proposed million break? Thank you. This public hearing is now closed. Item five, or item four of U.N. discussion, five A is approval of a deer sculpture located at Rotary Centennial Park. Ms. Peterson?
This is Laura Harlich, who's just been a, a part of the, the former Houston County Arts Alliance and Perry Arts Group, has maintained the funds that, from the fund, Houston County Arts Alliance as a board member there. And she has, because that group no longer honestly will actually exist or does projects anymore, she has offered to buy a set of three sculptures for City of Perry, is helping separate, I'll say this right, a book, a doll, a doe, and a poem. There's three separate sculptures. And the same gentleman that, Donnie Ryan is his name, he did the sculpture for a horse that's in this, in front of the event center. A very interesting man, he's very excited about the prospect of doing this for City of Perry. We met at Rotary, at Rotary Park one afternoon to look at possible locations to, to set these pieces of sculpture. And found something that we felt like, found a place that we felt like was, you know, without the interviewing with anything that might be set up or any people out there, but also here the sidewalk and the parking lot, so they would be easily, you couldn't find a spot that, where the light would have been nearer the road so that perhaps people going by and see it, but had to be on totally level land, so there was not a spot that that would work in. So it's very near the parking and sidewalk. So it's a lovely location, trees, and so we recommend that the, I'm not sure what it is, we need to know about that, but it's a gracious offer from the Houston County Arts Alliance.
Mr. Gilmore, I think there are all related in concurrence, they said that the location is not correct.
Yes, that's, that's correct. We already had the presentation, a member from his office talked about that. U.S. Councils appointed a committee to review the location and make the recommendation. Councilmember Peterson has come back and reported that. Part we know administrated by the line to recommend that you help her and then proceed with the, as a sculpture created and then it's called. May remember, this is, Ms. Peterson indicated it's all being done at the builders, what's going to the city provide is just...
There may be some, I would think the city would be involved with this action or action install, but I don't understand that, just maybe, maybe a level or something like that, but nothing of any significance. It is a gift to the city.
Council members, do you have any questions relative to this? Do I have your in concurrence to move forward with the community, with the committee's Do you have in concurrence, unanimous in concurrence to move forward with the placement of this? So thank you for the hard work on that. It's going to add an interesting dimension to the part.
I don't think you're going to, it's just a gift to Perry.
Would you like, yes? Item five B is Office of the City Manager. Five B one is proposed restaurant district expansion, Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For you this evening, we have a map of a proposed restaurant district expansion for downtown. The gray areas are already included in the downtown restaurant district, and the red is bothering to, to you tonight for expanding that district. Proposing, are proposing this expansion to downtown to make downtown very remarkable for future restaurant growth and development. The expansion I think is needed as downtown continues to grow and we try to acquire more restaurants in downtown. The DEA and the Main Street Advisory Board have approved this expansion on their boards.
Questions, council members? Mr. Gilmore, will this need a voting tomorrow night to expand this, or is this a concurrence?
I don't believe it's a concurrence. I think there's actually an instrument you're going to have to go and act, and we'll let you know about that tomorrow.
But it's just proposing to, as I understand, there's additional restaurants potentially coming into those areas and they need, needs to be expanded to pick them up, to make them part of our restaurant downtown area?
Yes, sir. That's correct. We thought a couple of restaurants in downtown to explore the possibility of going into some of these places downtown, and we just want to be able to make downtown very more marketable to that future possibility.
So, council members?
I would have one comment about that, that this past weekend, we were eating in a downtown restaurant, and I overheard other customers asking a woman who worked in there about, they were at the bar and they were saying, all right, we don't mind the other than her item. And, and the bartender said, and we can just take, I think, about sign. And then they went. And, and so there were, it took all I had, I mean, thought myself in their conversations to explain that about the restaurant district. So I wondered if it might be a good idea that we just give a one sheet piece of information. I know they've been giving it over and over, but just something their employees would be able to explain that to a customer, but she's totally not able to explain it. It just sounded like, can you imagine that? So that's just, just all that I have.
Yes, and we do have a promotional wire, but I can make sure that the restaurants get that again, to make sure that their employees are educated on this restaurant district as well, the same.
Other questions? Do you have in concurrence to move forward with this, to bring it forward to the council tomorrow night for a vote? Mr. Gilmore, if you would add it to the agenda for tomorrow night, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five B two is Go Go Gov Series Recap. Ms. Turpin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to recap quickly the Go Go Gov project that we had. Over the last three months, we did one each month starting in May. We started with Wood and Eagle Park in North Perry, and then in June, we had Hugh Lawson's Seater Park, Bill Brockle Tucker, and last month, we did Hapley Park here in this area. The concept of Go Go Gov, for those who aren't familiar, was to take city hall resources into the neighborhoods and directly into the hands of residents. We just wanted to test this out and see how the community would respond to it. Some of the observations that we made, which were kind of surprising, was that the locations that were actually tucked away in the neighborhoods were the ones that had the highest attendance. My initial thought was the ones like Hapley Park off of Swift Street, where you have lots of people driving by, would possibly have the higher attendance numbers, but that actually did see the lowest numbers in attendance. The reason that I think for that is because this type of packed event is something that drew in families, they were out for a morning walk, neighborhoods, you know, where people were just kind of getting up for the day, just kind of curious about what's going on. Whereas the residents who were driving by on Swift Street, they were driving 45, 5 miles an hour, they already had somewhere to go, you know, they were kind of getting on with their day. So I really think that if we continue this program, that looking at neighborhood parks, pocket parks, and walkable areas would be the most ideal. Another consideration is the timing of the event. We hosted each one of these events from 10 a.m. to noon, and one of the things that we noticed at each event was that we didn't really see attendance pick up until about 11 o'clock hour. So perhaps it was just too early on a Saturday that people wanted to sleep in, eat breakfast with their family, just totally reasonable. So if we did continue it, we would consider maybe moving into a weekday evening or later than on a weekend. The fire safety house with the fire department was a huge contributing factor to getting people to stop and come out. I do not think that we would have had the attendance that we had were it not for the fire safety house and getting people interested. It also served as a really great opportunity for kids to be entertained by our wonderful fire department staff while we had meaningful conversations with their parents. Some of the feedback that I personally not attended these was that they expressed to have more intimate communication with their council members. So they really enjoyed meeting with the ones that were there, but definitely in the future if we were to continue it, they would really like to meet with their direct representatives. The families enjoy having free children's activities so that they could actually ask questions and talk to people without the distraction. So I think it was a good balance and a good opportunity to really connect with people. And attendees did desire more information than we had present. We didn't have representation from all of the different departments, so I think that if we were to continue something like this, it would be more wideened from the entire City of Perry. In retrospect, my recommendation would be to return to the town hall meetings. I think that going out to the parks, while it's a great concept, a lot of people didn't know which parks were in their neighborhood, where they were supposed to go, and kind of got lost in the message. Whereas the town hall meetings, most people, whether they have children or not, are familiar with which school they're going for. So if there's a meeting going on in school in my zone area, I know that's the one that I should be attending. And we can still take all of the concepts that we took to Go Go Gov to those town hall meetings. So my recommendation... So my recommendation would be to re finalize the town hall meetings, bring those back, and then incorporate some of the concepts of the Go 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 into that.
Questions, councilmembers? I think it was a great concept, and like you said, our timing might have been off, but, uh, I thought you did an outstanding job of taking government to the community.
Thank you.
Maybe there's a, a different timing to begin, but I would agree with you. I would like to see us blend the two programs together and have a town hall meeting and then, uh, specific people representing that area would be there doing the presentations, and then we could have some activities associated with it, so.
Sure. Any more comments?
Very good recommendation. Questions or comments?
I certainly have seen that this is invaluable to, for taking what we am and who we are to, uh, you know, the people that live in the neighborhoods and want to, they'll walk over there, they have all kinds of questions. It's not always just about their, their order of heart. You know, it's, it's about other things as well, and it's a great opportunity to be face to face with people, which, you know, we're just with people too, so it's, I, I think it's an excellent program. However, if you decide it's best to go forward with it, we'd definitely be interested in it.
Thank you. Some other considerations, I'm sorry to include those, but you may think about it. Uh, it was recommended by some of our attendees that we incorporate food trucks into it. There's one thing that we all know about Perry is that we love our food trucks, um, so if that is something that we would like to explore, I'd be more than happy to try to coordinate that, um, but really it's how, whatever your vision is, whether it's town halls, whether we try this at a different kind of date, um, just let me know what your thoughts are, and we can help.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like to say too, that the person who works at ours, um, Go 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 days is Anya. She has to get there early and unbelieve, uh, a ton of stuff set up, and then, you know, everybody disappears, and there she is to load it back up into her van. She's just, just done an amazing job, and, and the firefighters were always so helpful to her in that, and it's, it was just a great display of, of what our city, how, how our employees care about, uh, expressing the message of the city to citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, we were great, and Hapley Park really did an outstanding job. Um, they didn't have to come out and do all that. Some days, they hold out that legal house, blew it up, and they had five kids, um, but those five kids had a really great time, so I really appreciate them. Um, when it was a little bit slower, they definitely kept me entertained, and we discussed different ideas and events and stuff, so it was still for, I gave you some time, um, but it definitely would not have been the same without them. And then also the councilmembers, and they are coming out, and I appreciate your all's support as well.
Don't you complain, I've got a seat for him, did not bring these through.
Maybe that's what we need. Forget the food truck.
Say, hold the park truck.
Yeah. Thank you.
Item five B three is subdivision monument signs. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Historically, the city, if I try to be backed up, this is the definition of a subdivision monument sign. I think everybody can see him on the screens there. Uh, usually they are put via by the developer, primarily as an identification location and a marketing tool. Historically, the city has taken the position that the monument signs, in any of the landscape of work they do, is a responsibility of the residents of the subdivision. Normally, that goes back to a homeowner's association. As the city has continued to grow, we have more and more of these monument signs coming in, and I'll go through a couple of examples, and what we're asking is, council determine what type of policy we want to continue, or if they want to make some type of modification. It's what you see up here for New Haven is relatively simple. However, as you can see, there are some, uh, trees here, bushes that need to be trimmed, uh, grass. These signs can be located either on city right-of-way, or they can be located on homeowner association property, or the next one I have. This is another example over for Cheshire Place. As you can see, same basic size of the monument sign, however, there's more extensive landscaping, and I'd also like to put out, point out right here, if everybody can see it, the lighting device, so that the sign is lit at night. The reason I'm pointing that out is that it's another expense relative to a monument sign to put in. Sometimes they get a little fancier and bigger, you can see for Stone Bridge here, not quite as much on the landscaping, also having the light and a bigger sign. Graceville subdivision, while, uh, my legs have grown, as you can see, stay general type monument type sign, more extensive landscaping in, and also extended out infrastructure that goes with the monument sign. Go ahead. Ivy Glen subdivision, another example, a little fancier work that's done on the monument side, see all the little small flowers and everything that are in there, all of which are the responsibility of a homeowner's association, or who have to take care of. Go ahead. And of course, they get a little bigger and fancier than this. The one from Woodlands, as you can see, much bigger monument sign, much more features on it. Uh, you can see they have a split with the plant or something in the monument, and then landscaping down below that, uh, rocks, lighting, much bigger. And with River, uh, once again, large monument type sign, much more extensive landscaping involved. The administration's recommendation to council on that, uh, the reason this is coming to you is that a number of these subdivisions will have strong homeowner associations when they first start. And then as time goes on, different orders come in, the interest dies off, uh, new residents won't pay the homeowner due, so on and so forth, so the homeowner association goes away. And then the question is going to be, who takes care of this? Is this the responsibility of all the taxpayers of the city, or is it the responsibility of residents in the subdivision? And if it's going to be the residents of the subdivision, how is it you're, we're going to have that taken care of and collect that income? Uh, so, the administration's recommendation is number one, that the council retain its policy, but actually, uh, enact the official policy statement relative to this, that subdivision monument signs are the responsibility of the homeowner's association and/or the residents of that particular subdivision. Second thing is, should the homeowner's association fail, then for the city to do anything with the property, that property that the sign is on has to be titled to the city. Now, may already be titled, the city is part of their right-of-way, or if it's homeowner's association property, that property has to be titled over the city. Reason for that is city cannot spend any public money on private property, and homeowner's association is considered private property. Third thing relative to this, the city will not do any of this landscaping. They won't maintain it, they won't continue the plantings with it and everything. If, if the city winds up taking it over, for the policy the council agrees, landscaping will be taken up, basic trees will be kept, uh, just on a regular, generally natural type of stuff, and the monument signs will sell, which means we would not pay for irrigation on these signs, would pay for electricity, for the lights on the sign, uh, just to be a basic type of deal. Third thing would be that the city would not do any more relative to the monument sign. So if we have someone who celebrates a little too much with their vehicle and hit one of these monument signs, then the monument sign is torn down, and it's removed and not replaced by part of the city. Some of you all may remember, we did something similar with this over Hyatt, we offered Main Road, and we had some problems with the monument sign that had up there. The other alternative which council may want to take a look at is if there is interest in the subdivision for maintaining these type of signs, then the city would coordinate contracting it out, and the charges would be added on the city's, city service bill for all the risks in the subdivision. That way, we would be sure to get the taxpayers reimbursed for the expenditures of maintaining signs. But the administration's preference would be that we do nothing with that other number without one. Have to answer any questions?
Questions, councilmembers?
We do not have one now, that is, Mr. Turpin, can you come back to the first one? This one here has a failing homeowner's association over in New Haven. They have approached the city about what the city would do relative to this monument sign, which I want to come back to the council and affirm which direction they want to go with. This is the first one, but I do not believe it will be the last one, based on history of owner's associations.
I was curious about what was the original agreement when, uh, the land was designated to host a monument? What if it was, um, HOA land to start with, and so it would have been too much to talk about, but if it was the city's position, what was the city's position when it was taken to the city and said we'd like to build a monument here?
Ryan, come on, thank you.
I'm not sure, um, how that all works. Um, I know that there are Woodlands, for example, that sign is in the right-of-way, um, sort of, yeah, median in the middle of the street, uh, city accepted the street, so I guess we technically accepted, uh, that monument sign, the landscaping around it. Um, I think that, based on my understanding, council has the policy in the past, or the presumed policy, has been that they've still, uh, been the, the homeowner's association's responsibility to maintain those. Uh, one thing that we can look at before if, um, the government wants to do their monument sign, and maybe invite that, is actually add that property carved out of the right-of-way as sign to the homeowner's association, so it's clearer. But I think in the past, that that sort of, it's been sort of mixed of, um, it's either a subdivide, um, little circle area, or a median area, or it's just been accepted as part of the right-of-way, so I don't know if there's been any consistency in the past on how this has been done.
So if we accepted the streets and the monuments were there, so if we accepted the streets and the property became ours, did the property that the monument is on also became ours? Is that right?
The property that the monument is on is, yes, where, um, in our, in the, um, resolutions that council, you know, passes for acceptance of streets, it typically says that you're accepting, uh, the street itself, uh, the right-of-way, sidewalks, the water and storage utilities, doesn't say anything about signs. Uh, so I, I think from my perspective, um, I don't think the city hasn't actually accepted the sign itself, just the land that the sign's on.
Other questions?
Mr. Gilmore, are there any others that fit the description of a woodland where there's a median? We, and we accept some of the lands accordingly?
There could be. I do not know for sure, this is just a random sampling going out for this presentation. Uh, following up on Brian's, the city has not in the past restricted subdivision monument signs. They have not taken them in as the city's responsibility to maintain, but they're not prohibited in our subdivision regulations. The subdivision monument sign is one of, historically, a major selling point, identification, marketing tool that developers use, uh, to promote their particular subdivision, of where it's located, and the audience that it has, and affluence of the, you know, whatever case may be that they're trying to, to market with. Uh, certainly one of the other things we could do is in the future prohibit monument signs within the city right-of-way, but that will not address existing signs, nor will it address the issue of signs that may be over on homeowner's association property. For example, the first one I show, show you on New Haven, that's on homeowner's association property, not city right-of-way. My concern is, is that for the residents in the subdivision and, and people are going by and everything, if we just don't do anything with it, the attorney can't give a bad impression relative to that neighborhood as well as the city.
So what, what is your recommendation at this point in time from administration? Do you would like us to consider?
Well, the council has no objection. We'll prepare a resolution establishing a policy. You can actually go through or review that, if you want to amend it or whatever, and then you can take appropriate action with the, the bridge with the council.
Would you have, do you want to do that tomorrow or during, uh, first, first meeting in September?
Uh, first meeting is September, these, that voice aren't going anywhere this summer.
That's pretty obvious. Okay. We will readdress this on Sept, first, first meeting we have in September. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Item five B four is animal adoption of, thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you are hearing comments from some citizens relative to the animal adoption process. Uh, the city historically has tried to work with various organizations to handle the adoption process. Uh, the example of that is that council may be referring to this COPA's. Uh, recently, we were advised by COPA's that their, uh, facility is full, and they're not in a position, at least it stands right now, to take any additional animals for adoption. Uh, so therefore, we're bringing this to council for it to consider if it wants to make some type of change. Let me, though it may not appear to be different, but let me clarify to one point, okay? It is not the city's policy that an animal comes in and after seven days is euthanized. That is not the city's policy. What the city policy says is that, number one, the role of the city is to respond to concerns from residents about picking up stray or feral animals. Those animals that are picked up are retained. We try to find the owner if there is an owner for the animal. If there is some group that is interested in adopting the animal after seven days, we certainly work with them. If we run out of space, then it is generally first come, first, first in, first out. That is just an operational procedure that we have. We had good luck with COPA's and some other groups relative to adoption. A good number of the animals that we wind up picking up are not suitable for adoption. I'd like to point that out, like, uh, probably on feral cats, you know, that are, are wild animals, uh, just not appropriate for adoption. But, uh, it appears because of the crowded issue with COPA's, that council may want to consider some other type of options if it wants to consider any adjustments to its policy. Uh, the one most frequently that comes up is that the city should get into the adoption business, some way, shape, or form. So I provided to you that if the city was going to proceed with that, there are a couple or several things they need to keep in mind. First one is that the city would need to have additional staff if we're going to do There was a suggestion made relative to our current staff. We have a current staff of two people that are responsible for collecting animals and caring for animals, seven days a week, generally twenty-four hours a day. So there's a need to get an additional staff person anyway, regardless of which way council may decide to go. Second thing would be cost that's involved relative to the adoption process. Second thing would be cost that's involved relative to the adoption process. Examples of that would be microchips, donating, or spending, possibly some other medical costs, you know, relative to the animals, to have one that may be suitable for adoption, but certain things that need to be taken care of. That may or may not be the city's responsibility interacting if it gets into the adoption business, but almost all rules deal that that is important to especially consider. Third item, which was already talked about, is what public expectation is relative to adoptions. Ideally, as was mentioned, I'm not quite sure the setup, but we consider it forward, that the city would devote resources in order to have a full-time ongoing adoption operation process. And of course, this is to be more expensive. You also have, as was outlined very well, public expectations if the city decides to retain its current policy. I think it's important from, at least from a city standpoint, that when we're talking about this issue, number one, we are not talking about the vast majority of residents who live in the city. There's a good number of them don't have any animals. We're also not talking about, in general terms, responsible pet owners, because responsible pet owners take care of their pets. They keep them on leash, they keep them in their yard, you know, whatever the case may be. Occasionally, you'll have one get out, and if that's the case, we hear from the owners quite quickly, and they can come by and pick up their animal. But you do have residents and some people who do not act as responsible as we would like, of course, that, you know, for example, we have people who, out of the kindness of their heart, put food out for cats, for dogs, whatever, which also causes minds up being squirrels, and mice, rats, snakes, whatever the case may be. But then, we wind up getting calls from their neighbors about these animals, cats, for example, walking all over, walking on the car, you know, whatever the case may be. So we go by and talk with these people, and they're very kind-hearted, of course, but we ask them for their cats, and they don't, they don't know anything about the cats. So if we do wind up having, depending on how far you wind up going and what the general policy would be, we could also run into space issues. And the third, the last item issue we have is that we potentially have a problem with people dropping off their animals, which can be done almost any time, drop it outside of the facility. You don't know particularly why, what the circumstances are. Council has adopted a policy relative to, we do not accept the drop-offs at our facility. Other than, and there's a particular set of circumstances that are involved with that, so we can generally be able to avoid them. But if there's a perception that the city of Perry is moving correctly, rightly or wrongly, moving into the direction of taking care of all the animals at all times, I believe that we could wind up having our facility overwhelmed, like people coming in from the city, from outside the city, dropping off, whatever the case may be. So, as I think was mentioned by one of the speakers, it is a multi-faceted issue. There are many points of view relative to it. But from my standpoint as the manager, what I am interested in is, and my major focal point is, what is in the best interest of the city as a whole, as determined by council policy? I think, so the question obviously is, okay, Mr. Manager, where are we going now? What do you propose? I would suggest to council that we do a limited adoption basis, which would be on Saturdays from sometime to sometime, not all day, and that's it. Not six days, seven days a week, double by or any of that type of stuff. We'll provide the opportunity. As I mentioned before, there's a need for an additional physician, so I request the council, okay, funding that physician, because it'll be multi-use. Certainly, a recommended follow-up on one of the suggestions to maximize social media relative to what animals we have that are determined by our staff to be suitable for adoption. Our staff is very experienced with that, had good interaction with COPA's, so they have a good idea about which animals would fit for adoption and which ones would not. And we give that a trial period of about a year, and then we go back and we assess where we are and what's happening. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions, council?
Do we have a chip reader in case we pick up an animal that we're able to determine whether or not they have a chip?
I do not know on that. Ms. Marshall can answer that.
We do have a chip.
Yes, we do.
This additional physician that you are promoting, is it full-time?
Yes. The primary, no, I'm sorry, the primary need is going to be to assist with the care of the animals in the shelter and also to provide additional backup relative to picking up stray animals for adoption. Its primary purpose is not, from a municipality standpoint, its primary purpose is not for adoption alone, however. With that additional physician, I believe we could provide the adoption option on that limited time.
In general, without any change in how we do business now, how long would an animal live in our shelter before, you know, before his life ended?
There's no, there's no particular way of telling on that. First thing is, what is the, what is the physical condition and health of the animal that's picked up? If the animal has been hit by a truck and is all banged up and injured and everything, the animal won't survive very long anyway. If it is a, can't go back to, it's a feral cat, and the cat is just totally hostile to any type of human touch or interaction, there's a problem to pick up, just a problem to deal with, then after the mandatory seven days, that animal will be put down. That's our policy, because we just know it's not, we would not want to take any responsibility for having that animal, somebody, a family, to a doctor, and then they have all kinds of problems with that. You can also have that problem sometimes with some dogs, you know, that are picked up, that they, if they have some type of background or training for fighting. It just may be the nature of the breed as it was raised. I won't say all breeds, some breeds bad, I'm not saying that, but, you know, some people will get a breed for a particular purpose, you know, and raise it, it can be basically very hostile to outsiders. And then they decide they had enough with that animal, or they found out that the animal is a problem for their children, you know, so they need to get the animal out of the house. And animals like that would not be staying beyond the seven-day period. Otherwise, it's just a function of how much we gather coming in. So I'd say generally, animals that are probably adoptable have got a good chance for about four weeks, you know, maybe more, maybe less, depending. I hate to say any particular time, because then you get quoted on that, but it mostly again goes back to what the body wants. So if we wind up having more people bringing animals to our shelter, we only have a limited space in which we can house them, and so therefore we fall back on that policy. The last animals that would be euthanized with much regret are those that are possibly able to be adopted, but for one reason or not, or not. Ms. Marshall can understand. They can every effort they can within the constraints that they have to hold on to animals that may be adoptable and hope that they will be chosen and selected out.
Skilmore, does the city assume any liability in terms of the adoption process? What would that look like?
We would, we would get back. Certainly, the city has liability if we allow the dangerous dog to be adopted out. In general terms, if there's no particular reason for us to assume that the animals have particular disabilities or problems or anything, then we're usually okay on that. That would be, that'd be one of the things, of course, that whoever comes in and adopts the pet, signs off and acknowledges as well. There'd be, in essence, a release form. You know, that I understand, I'm taking this pet, I'm responsible for this pet, I will do whatever particular conditions are that would be appropriate, and they have to sign off on that and date it, that it becomes their responsibility.
Director Skilmore, do you need to vote on that tomorrow night?
I think the only thing that would need to be done right now would be, if council concurs to proceed with that process, then we'll put it all together in a laid-up, written form, if you can finalize it, and indicate if you're comfortable with it or if something might have occasioned any more.
The process of having, I'm just making sure I understand, the process of having Saturday adoptions and the promotion of the animals through social media?
Yes, the most important would be the physician.
Oh, yes, sir.
From my standpoint, the physician's role.
Think about the animals. Chief, I...
Mr. Johnson, yes. Council, you agree with the good authority, the final authority, the second floor, in Perry? Go up the council together, and see if we can move a little address this far.
I'm not sure how we will have that, but it will be nine-year, next meeting, first meeting in September, etc.
Okay. Thank you.
Glad we fired this EV charging stations proposal, Ms. Martin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just as a quick recap, it's been about a year that we talked about electric vehicle charging stations. At that time, I presented a proposal from Georgia Power's make-ready program, and at that time, we talked about four dual chargers in close proximity to downtown through the make-ready program, and it was level two, and it was going to cost the city about $4,000. And so at that time, he said to revisit it at a future date, so that's been about a year, and it's now, Georgia Power is out of funds. They exhausted the $18 million that they reserved, and they said that in December, they'll find out if they do have funds for 2023. However, we do have the opportunity, but I'd like to discuss with you all tonight about another program, EV charging. As you all know, electrification is here. I know that you all got copies of the Georgia Trend Magazine that had an eight-page article on EVs. I see more and more Teslas in Perry every day, and it's not the same one, they're all different colors. So we know these vehicles are here, they're coming, and the infrastructure needs to be here. This map on the left shows all of the charging stations in Georgia. It's looked at as a public and a guest amenity. The drivers that I've talked to that have Teslas and EV vehicles that live in Houston County said, yes, if it was level three chargers, I would stop. If Perry had level three chargers and I was traveling, Tesla drivers snap out their route, knowing where they're going to stop. So it's looked at as destination charging, it improves visitors' experiences, and it needs to be looked at as infrastructure too, like broadband and internet, so, you know, things that are coming in the future and that currently people appreciate and utilize. There's over 60 check-ins in the last few months of the Georgia Power high-speed charging that I've looked at, so people are using them. In the next few years, the top three automakers in Detroit are going to have 50% of sales that are electric vehicles. And by 2026, which is four years from now, there's going to be 130 EV models for 43 brands just here in America. So we know that the cars are coming. There's a company called Francis Energy that's out of Oklahoma, but they have now entered the southeast market, they're working with other cities in Georgia, they're also working with Alabama, South Carolina, Florida, and they have an attractive program that can allow the city to obtain level three chargers at their cost to the city, and we can make money off it. So they propose four level three chargers on four parking spaces, and they will tap into federal dollars for us. The only requirements are that it needs to be within one mile of the interstate interchange. And so Francis Energy is going to do all the work. They own the equipment, they own the chargers, they manage the construction, they operate the services, they give us the data, so their network chargers, so we can look at zip codes and see who's coming, how long they're staying. They put us on the app, the plug share, on the website, and people can include pairing, they're mapping their route. And they also set up their own utility near an account, and they pay for that, so the city doesn't even pay for the utilities used in charging. This is another slide on kind of how that process works. They propose a lease from the city, a 15-year lease at a site that we'll talk about in a few minutes, at $400 a year, so it's a nominal lease fee. Then they'll apply for the federal funds, 80%, there's a federal mandate that over the next few years, that there's charging stations within every 50 miles. This company has already done this in Oklahoma, they're the first to do so, and Oklahoma really doesn't even have that many EVs right now. And so the locations to consider are Heritage Oaks Park, which is off I-75 on the west side of C-9, so that would be in closer proximity to some restaurants for the drivers. However, typically, when people stop, they do, they try to go to the bathroom, and most charging places are 24/7 access. So since that park closes at 10:00 p.m., we have to think about, you know, putting them outside the gates or having gates open, so that's an option, as well as the Welcome Center, which brings visitors off I-75 and Fairgrounds, that's another option. If the Welcome Center is willing to work with Francis Energy and do that, I don't think that city has a property, that's another option. Or last option is 1211 Washington Street, which is the current city hall, not the new one that's downtown. That would give the opportunity, it's within that one mile distance on I-75, and future city fleets, you know, if you'll ever comes five years and says, well, the only car we can get is an electric Tesla, how are city employees going to charge? This is a way that for free, we can utilize Francis Energy and have that infrastructure in place. So, any questions? I have no idea how many are in Perry right now, but I know that there's a couple parked downtown every day, when I drive up by Starbucks in different places, I see more and more of them. I know there's two Rubians in Houston County, and they've only made about $4,500 of those. If you want to test drive one, there is a Ford F-150 Lightning out at Phil Brandon Ford that's available for test drive, that somebody can buy, but they can't take it off the lot till December. It's more than $60,000. The Aven Motel does have charging stations, they have two, I think, one's currently not working. And then the new hotel at the Fairgrounds says that they will initially have four charging stations, with the infrastructure, as the need arises, because they plan to be there forever, they'll add a dozen more, so they'll have up to 15, once that need is there.
I think Strickland's has two fast chargers.
Yes, that Georgia Power does two fast chargers at Strickland's. And there's a bunch of Warner Robbins, Warner Robbins, because of their larger population, they do have more. They have a couple on city property at the Hennings that have been in place since 2018, and their staff has told me that they're highly utilized, and those are level twos, those aren't the best speed.
How long does it take to enjoy it?
These level threes about 30 minutes. And I know on the Teslas, they only charge two, 80%. And I know on the Teslas, they only charge to 80%. They don't go past that, and the battery manufacturers recommend not going past 8%. They said like your phone, don't let it go below 20, don't go above 80.
Do you have the details on what the city's commitment in your write-up that I read? It says that they're filing a grant request for 80% of the money on behalf of the city.
Yes.
Not in their arms, so that means?
Right.
The city is the person who is borrowing money?
Well, it's not a loan. They would on behalf of the city through a contractual agreement or lease agreement, they would then go after those federal funds on behalf of the city, obtain those funds, and then they pay the other 20%. So that's where it's at, no cost for the city, but it's not a loan program.
Sure, I understand that, but I'm just asking you one, and all federal funding has significant requirements behind it. And if the money's going to be granted to the city, 80% of it, I'd like to have a better understanding of what the requirements are from federal government for us advocates.
Okay.
Questions, Council? So what would you like to do at this point in time?
Get your course announced on the board.
Okay.
Why don't you bring that information back to us?
Okay.
We can get it, so we're trying to do it, we understand what commitments we're making.
Okay. And you, you want the federal funding requirements?
Yeah, what, what they're, what our obligations are around the grant. Kind of that we have applied for other grants, and they come with some very stringent stipulations, and I would like to understand what those stipulations are.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I'd also suggest that this Harman get a copy of the proposed agreement addressed, so he can take a look and see what's actually in that agreement. The other thing I think that needs to be addressed as well is, I'll make sure we're clear about what this company is going to do for getting power to these chargers. We remember last time when we talked about that, there was, we did not want to have a situation where you had overhead power line coming and then just dropping down, or remember, just dropping down, you know, a lot of the setting, because our facility council decides to go ahead. So I think that'd be another important thing to take a look at. And certainly from that agreement, get back with the agent, some reference, check and see what, as you mentioned, there were the federal grant requirements.
Also, Mr. Gilmore, I, I'm not real comfortable going into competition as a city with free enterprise. I noticed that Lucky's is putting in 20 right now, just, you know, a couple miles on the road from us. So I'm not sure what the importance of the city getting into this business is. Essentially, we know there's a large number of people, such as the hotel now that Fairgrounds is talking about, putting 15 in and things like that, because in, in my past life, you know, I didn't care much about cities competing with lease selling gases, you know, and so that was a product that bothered me. So I think I kind of look at that, the free enterprise system is going to take care of this. I, I don't know that, that I'm real comfortable about getting in competition with that, but I can understand the city getting to push it forward. I understand that issue, so it's just something we need to consider.
Would you be interested in other options regarding if Georgia Power has funding again? Like maybe looking at level two again for, you know, destination charging on city property somewhere? Maybe not in the part of downtown, but at 1211 Washington Street for current city fleets? Would you be interested in us looking at other grant programs that can pay for infrastructure and the chargers on other city property for future fleets?
Well, I think we're willing to look at any opportunity as long as it's something that we as a city can use.
Okay.
If we're going to go to electric police cars, electric fire engines, and that kind of stuff.
Can you also research the city of Warner Robbins, what accompany them in, or some of the stipulation?
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Harman.
We'll record your response. All right, the last city is the office of the city attorney, the last city ordinance in discussion of the PTB standard ordinance, Mr. Mizzou.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, you were following a couple days ago, we had a discussion on personal transportation vehicles. And at that time, council construction pressed to move forward with appearing ordinance to establish a PTB plan. And so we started that, but there's still some follow-up questions that my office had relative to what is council's direction, specific elements of PTB. That's why I wanted to bring this up tonight, to try and get guidance from you, so we can incorporate that into a plan, to then circulate with our local law enforcement, that's supposed to be that under state law, we propose a PTB plan before bringing a final copy of our ordinance to be for consideration and option. So the first thing to discuss would be, you know, the first thing to discuss would be the designation of certain streets. And so with that, PTBs, PTBs being active local ordinance, can be driven or operated on the city street where the speed limit is 25 miles per hour or less. With this, you also have the ability to limit certain streets, so we can have designated streets, you can have some that are restricted streets that the PTBs are not allowed with them, if it's, if, you know, speaking with maybe our engineering department or with law enforcement, we may be able to use a larger area that could not be in the best interest of traffic or safely. Or we can just elect to have all city streets where the speed limit is 25 miles per hour or less be part of our plan. And so that would be, the first question would be, how would, how would you like to move forward with designating streets where our PTB limit? Well, with the personal transportation vehicles, that's what the state law has established as basically the speed limit, because these vehicles themselves only travel up to 20 miles per hour. And so state law says that locally, we can enact ordinance to allow people to operate their PTBs on roads where the speed limit is 25 miles per hour or less.
See, because Main Street in downtown is only 30. So if you wanted them to operate in the downtown area on Main Street, you would have to reduce the speed limit just by a mile an hour, because the speed limit is in there, so that entire zone is 30 miles an hour. I mean, I would say that, in my opinion, you would not want them over on Commerce Street. I think your main thoroughfare or federal highway, you know, I think that's, that would not be acceptable. But I, I think you can control it by saying they can operate on any street that's 25 miles an hour or lower.
And I'll say to follow up on the comment you just made, part of our plan can allow for designated crossing of state or highway center part of the state system, but it can only be as designated crossing. So that's something that, the input that you have and locations that you think would be better for designated crossing, we're simply coordinating that in G-DOT, because our plan cannot include the use of any state law, um, or portion thereof, except for... Except for designated crossings. So that would be the second, I guess, point that we would need direction on, would be do you all have any input on designated crossings, other than us just coordinating and getting G-DOT's recommendations and bring the bits back to you?
Well, I'm of the strong opinion that the police department, that would be a portion that needs to be, have a big seat at the table. Captain, everything?
Um, you know, the cop or ICU of the personal transportation vehicle has created a lot of confusion for people. Um, you know, I know we're looking for restaurant injuries, the downtown vehicle, uh, if we're going across a state route like Main Street, it needs to be out of traffic, you know, when you cross from start time, you have a stop for the vehicle to cross the road. And someone may not be violating, uh, I just saw recently in another area where, you know, cop or struck on somebody, I reckon it was, you know, suspended, traded, if you're one of the cop or field. Um, so I think we're going to do that, we can try to let traffic control apply to our four-way start side, not just allow them to cross at, at a wrong intersection.
And just to touch on that point, the designated crossing does have to meet the main law on uniform traffic side, traffic control devices, and that's to be a certain type of active rating crossing with the certain signage that we've looked at before, that has the yellow warning signs that PTBs are allowed on the streets and also crossing. So that, part of that would come into play as well.
Well, I think, I agree with Dr. Albrecht, that our police department is probably going to be able to identify the safest places for us to have is robbing. I know everybody would like to have a crossing off 127 when it gets at every intersection, but I think we're going to have to be restrictive on what we do and what kind of, you know, signaling we have there to protect people when they do cross.
I agree with you, Mayor. What's the, what's the issue we have now is, let's say, take a couple northside ride, and everyone goes downtown, or they might have driven the street that's over 25, you know, like that, and so that, that creates, technically, that's not crossing, they have to turn to go to one direction or the other for a lot of two. So we need to take that into consideration as well, and maybe, maybe a consideration for speed reduction. But I think that's been the, we know that, you know, the house that they rode was hit, you know, especially at Swift Street, at the end, that's not centralized for some cars.
That's not. I agree.
I think it won't be, it'll make a difference.
What other questions do you have for us?
We need the city's biggest safety, especially mature, that city's become a, a car, a lot else, which will, you know, it's one dollar, or that road, speed speed, but still one little call off.
Yes, sir. So to that point, a PTB is supposed to be a vehicle that can only transport up to a person. And so it has to be an ordinance to allow PTBs on our rates that are 25 miles per hour or less. If anyone is operating the PTB with more than a vehicle, or with more people than that particular model of a PTB is designated to hold, then that would be a violation of our PTB ordinance. And they could be pulled over and issued citation, just like any other type of motor vehicle, um, traffic violation. I don't know the specific manufacturing of that.
They could use lots too.
Right.
Because they only have two seats, and many of them are only two-seaters, and some of them are reserved. So, yeah, it would be only the number of people that that piece of our PTB was designed for.
So that would... Yes, sir. So that would bring up another point, is to ask what type of safety equipment beyond state minimum requirements, if any, would council want to require of PTBs being operated on our streets? So currently, under state law, it would be that PTBs are required in a braking system sufficient to stop the weight of the passengers in the vehicle, including a hard brake, a reverse warning device, that has to be functional at all times, with a directional control in the reverse position, a main power switch, uh, off position, and then key or other device activates the switches, remove the power circuit in that operated. They would have to have headlamps, reflex reflectors, stell lamps, a horn, a rearview mirror, safety warning labels, and hip restraints, and handholds or a combination thereof. So that's what... So... I know that in state law, it states that another person may not sit in a, in a driver's seat while the person operating the vehicle. It doesn't go into specifics about whether or not a baby can ride in a mother's seat, I mean, a mother's lap if she was a passenger. Presumably, if it is a four-passenger vehicle, and you have a driver and a child sitting in the lap of the other one, then currently without us having any additional requirements, that should be okay. But I can verify that for you. So age, since we have, have not adopted anything prior to 2012, under state law, our ordinance would have to require that the drivers be 16 years old or older, and they have to have a valid charger selection. Yes, or we don't get a, a choice in that, that's a particular matter.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned about, and I always ask about this, turn signals, especially if the people are driving at night, where they may not be able to see a hand signal. Or they might, you know, the person behind them might be like, need to do what they had signals, and they're 16, you know, it's been a few days, so I, I just, I don't know, I just think like the need of turn signals would be so important as far as safety goes.
Yes, ma'am. I can just tell you that this is what the state has established as the minimum safety standards, and that turn signals are not included in that list, presumably because they're only allowed to operate on roads where the speed limit is 25 miles per hour. So that we can think of as shoppers would be going with the speed limit and paying the tuition around you. But I can't answer any further.
Forget by, it's all PTBs, but do any PTBs come with turn signals, or that'd be something that they would, you know, owners would have to buy?
I would give, from my limited knowledge, that is not a standard taken from those. There are some that come back, but I believe that's an analog. Uh, we have issues of people who run it with no taillights, not designed out taillight, uh, currently. So taillights are bright lights and headlights that are beautiful, and are quite there. I, I think this is a 25 mile an hour, that would be a significant improvement over what we're dealing with right now, with the state law, that's about there.
Um, chief, how do you feel about the turn signal?
Yeah, we have cars that have them every day, and I think the state law has an option because they have turn signals. But I, I think it's a great idea, and I, I think we're starting to ask a lot of the most, I'd be, I accept that those PTBs are party purchase, uh, do not have those. I really think if people do have that, they have to stay required, and I would think the city needs to bring that call out. I think we can, as they care for their pride, just place the safety out, build, build the... I'm pro that the child be in child restraint, but I'm serious, when they actually have their car, a big particular road with a car, so I'm pro child restraint, but right now it's a, it's a recommendation, so since they have, have that in operation.
And requiring a child restraint would be something that would be specific to our ordinance, should council choose to require that as a minimum requirement. Um, besides giving your feedback on any additional requirements that you may want to see as far far as conditions of operating PTVs in our ordinance, we need some direction on local registration. So, local registration would basically, where we would have the PTV inspected by our police department, and then issue a fee count, go onto the PTV, so that maybe you, that all of the safety hours that you just said, that this PTV did not have, you know, being those minimum safety requirements. State law allows for the local registration to occur at least once every five years. It could be something that you have to do every year, or just once every five years and then have them renew it. And you can charge a fee for that, but the fee can't exceed fifteen dollars. So again, just looking for your feedback on how do you want to handle local registration of PTVs, and also, you know, different ordinances that you may look at across the state. Some of them say that those registrations are non-transferable, so if someone were to sell their PTV, the name owner needs to bring it in and have it registered, so it's registered under their, under their name. And also, there are some jurisdictions that require their city, part of their local licensing or registration requirement to be that all PTV security liability insurance, under state law, depending on the make, model, whether it's gas or electric, you could already have that requirement, depending on your specific vehicle, but that did be an additional requirement for all PTVs in the city of Erie. Again, on your discretion.
Captain, your thoughts on that?
Well, the idea of registration, I think, is a great idea, for the curious, number one, is the registration system we were expected to make sure it has the basic required with that, that car has to be on the road. Secondly, we can register it by number, by the number, unfortunately, sometimes, some people have this borrow system that they get returning, you know, without permission. And unfortunately, a lot of people have their information, they have my, if registered in the city, that would give us another way, almost like a chip or a amp, or you have a way of tracking something, that gets up and down. I do not think the idea of doing it every year is a requirement, I think it's a little open field, but, you know, at least it has to be registered, at least on a three-year basis. My, my other question is, we have a lot of people coming to the city of Erie, unincorporated here, or maybe New Orleans, and they know this is the event, they come to a friend's house, and they're, they're, they drive in town. How do we deal with that? And that, I think, we need to be addressed, in our residents' period, they know the period, or they come mail coding or.
Bearcamps.
Bearcamps is a community issue, with the motorcycle rentals here, and sometimes we have a hundred, fifty golf carts running around. We keep a lot high on South Bay Barque, Lay Walder, Cody Hudson, which is all our district, but I mean, it's still a contingent issue.
I think we can address that concern with allowing, basically, council allowing, like, a waiver of the registration requirements for a limited special limit. There is language that we've seen in other jurisdictions that we've been bringing forward to keep your consideration on that matter.
Chief, how do you feel about the issue relative to transferring the registration property?
If I own one and I sell it to council offering, it's our registration in the city period, I think we need to require a new transfer request, so we can now know that we can buy some dogs or something else that might come, that might come in a bid, that they could, or owner, there may be a reason behind why that. So I do think, not necessarily that it can be a complex, you know, if you transfer your car from one person to another, the golf cart's still on the road, makes the most state law would be prejudiced, you know, so I believe it all happens in some kind of transfer.
I'll say one other thing on the fee issue, I, the city manager may disagree with me, but I, I don't see the need per se to add anything to it, but those are my thoughts. Just to go over your thoughts beyond that.
Ironically, they're exactly the same. I, I don't think, particularly with the limit that's, well, Rebecca, one of the possible thoughts would be, well, if you have these fees, that these fees will help offset the cost of the registration monitoring signage and all that. That's not going to happen anywhere near here, there's not going to be that much generation with it. I'm much more interested from the standpoint of encouraging our residents to use the golf carts to get around, and for police to operate as part of the registration, which Captain Everidge has outlined, I think, very well, as an education point for all the people with their vehicles about, this is what you need to do, this is what's required, this is how it winds up going. And I think the imposition of a fee would just irritate an awful lot of people, and we wouldn't really get any, anything worthwhile, other than a lot of agreement.
And the last item that I have is, speaking of signs, there is a requirement that we have to post signs along the city limits, that notify that there is, we're going to be in areas with the speed limit, that golf carts are allowed on our city streets, so that would be another consideration. But I believe, as far as designated points where those signs need to be posted, that would be something that we can, we're looking at putting on from police as well as GDOT, and then bring that back to you.
Chief, any additional information tonight?
All right, I'm still, to be my problem tonight, but really, the guidance that I'm looking for is to see what additional safety requirements, if any, he wants to be in his plan, and then just to get your answers to this question about, are we going to charge fee, are we not going to charge fee, are we going to require one registration? I think if you would like, we can just move forward at this point, kind of with the feedback that we received, and working with, giving the police department input, and put together this initial draft, and maybe bring that back to a work session.
Yes.
Before putting it in final form, would that be agreeable?
I think that would be agreeable, and if any council member has additional suggestions, I would suggest that get with you and outline their concerns, or get with Captain Everidge, and outline their concerns, or get an explanation for, to him, and provide their input. So if anybody has any specific discussion item that you'd like to talk about, I would encourage you to talk to the city attorney, the chief of police, relative to those, and we can incorporate those into, if you get, you know, majority of people willing them.
The last thing that I would say, and again, while the people see ordinance as being restricted to the public, or that we're going to limit their ability to do something, even though there are certain things that we have to be, to be able to allow this to happen, by council taking action to move this forward, you're actually allowing them or enabling them to be able to legally, to be able to legally operate PTVs on streets in Erie here the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. So I just want to leave that.
Yes, basically, it's against state law, if you don't, so we need to have other ordinance that would allow them, under certain conditions, to do that. And it also gives definition to our police department, as to what they, they should and should not be doing against orders, traffic enforcement, and I think that would help them break it. So if you would, and anybody that has additional thoughts, and will share those with the city attorney or the chief of police, I would appreciate it, and if you could bring something back to us, that would be great.
Any comments, Mr. Gilmore, before we do pass that subject?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Newby, I appreciate that. I have six council members, despite racism. Dr. Albrecht, Mayor, please.
Just, just.
Yes, Mr. Gilmore, which is just totally not being produced about FOPAS, are they just not taking, they're still operational and just not taking any additional animals? Or are they closing? I've heard both things, I just didn't know.
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion out there relative to that. Our understanding as of today is that FOPAS is operational, but they are full and cannot take any more animals to hold for a dog. It's also my understanding, I had the, I apologize, I can't remember her name right now, but the main person handling that came to see me today, and indicated that they, they felt they were going to be able to continue to operate for a little bit, they're not quite sure, you know, depending on what they're able to do for a team, whether you volunteer or someone, and so forth. So I don't, I don't think FOPAS is an organization that we could count on all the time and not receive, like, I know you're on the OAK, but not receive some of that adoption process. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
It does, I mean, it, it was on a different ownership, so it just isn't exactly one's status.
Well, also, like, broke, I see, their ownership actually remains the same, they're a nonprofit charter organization, okay? However, they did lose their primary supporter advocate with the unfortunate death of Mr. Brooks. And so that's requiring them to kind of reorganize shift around and see what they're going to wind up doing, and I don't think they'd have a chance to really make any determination on what their plans are for going forward.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
I'll ask Ms. Newby, once you reach her. I have seven of our plan items. Ms. Keane, do you think?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Chief, anything additional to that?
Yes.
Chief Parkman?
Yes, sir.
Give us a little highlight on the fire last night.
Well, briefly, there was a fire at the dental office of the Pierce family there on Key Road, Key Drive. It looks to be a total loss at this point, unfortunately. Our guys did a great job, and we appreciate House and County coming in and giving us a hand with that as well. Currently, we believe the fire was caused by some sort of electrical issue, but the fire marshal will be gathering more information on that and make something official shortly. But again, there were no injuries, civilian lives or firefighter lives in that particular fire, so we're thankful for that, and again, thankful for the assistance brought by House and County.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your quick response. Mr. Swan?
Yes, sir.
Does this, anything? Ms. Warren, do you have anything for us? Ms. Newby, do you have anything additional for us this evening?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Garrett?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Park?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Park, anything additional?
Nothing.
Is that it for that? There are a few short. Council members, is there anything that needs to come before this, this evening, before we adjourn? Here, nothing, if there's not other, I propose to adjourn this session until tomorrow evening at five o'clock for our three council meetings. Please, please, we do, we're ready to get right in. Thank you very much. We adjourn.